I bring this March 26th session of Bridgewater Town Council to order. My name is councillor Michael Graves and Mayor Mitchell is in Uganda doing some humanitarian work and Deputy Mayor Tanner is away on business. Just a note for the agenda, this evening at 7:00 PM we're going to have a discussion about this year's capital budget. So to meet that 7:00 PM deadline, we may adjust the meeting slightly to accommodate the time, if we have the time. So the agenda has been circulated. Are there any additions or changes to that agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Also just a note that at the end of this meeting will be an in-camera meeting as allowed under the MGA, section 22, 2E, contract negotiations. While we no longer read proclamations, however, it's important to note that in 2018 provincial recognition of volunteers is from April 15th to 21st. All of us around this table are volunteers and I'm sure that many of the people viewing and the people in the audience are also volunteers as well. The town of Bridgewater in Lunenburg County is powered by volunteers and it would be very difficult to operate without them. So to help celebrate that fact, the town of Bridgewater is hosting a volunteer recognition ceremony on Wednesday, April 18th, starting at 7:00 PM at the Bridgewater Junior High School. We certainly hope that you can attend. Does councillor have any other announcements?
Just one, Michael.
Sure councillor.
Not really announcement, but I was actually went and represented the town and Sheriff was there too for the 30th anniversary of the Friends of Desperesay. And that was celebrated on March 18th, the cake and whatnot. And there's probably 50 to 55, maybe 60 people there, a huge turnout. And the important part is of what the Friends do for the museum. They sponsor the summer students, they buy a lot of stuff in the museum. And last year alone, they volunteered 1,399 hours, whether it's manning the desk or doing exhibits or whatnot. They're very important to the museum in the way it operates and I just wanted to pass that along.
Well, thank you. We certainly appreciate them. Anybody else? Also on March 18th, the Bridgewater Town Council dug into our pockets and we purchased a block of time at the LCLC so the public could have a free skate. My understanding is about 100 people attended that session, which is pretty good. Also on the way driving here today and after school, spring's fever is certainly in the air in Bridgewater. My street was filled with laughing kids on their bikes. It was great to see. I saw Congritable with his top down and a guy other than Rob Keable wearing a pair of shorts, so I thought that was pretty good. So we do have a delegation. So Nancy Green is with the South Shore Housing Action Coalition, or SHAC. And Nancy is a tireless promoter of affordable housing here on the south shore. And welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. It's nice to see you all some pieces I haven't seen for a while. Thank you for making time for me on your agenda this evening. As councillor Graves mentioned, I am here tonight as a member of the South Shore Housing Action Coalition. And we're here to share some highlights from the most recent census data, which came from the 2016 Census of Canada. And really the intent of this presentation is to just provide you with an update and bring your attention to the latest numbers. In many cases, I think you'll see that the numbers speak for themselves, so let's have So the first slide is showing some population data, some demographic data, and I'm sure you're probably familiar with some of these numbers, so I won't say too much about it. Since 2006, the population has increased by 7.4%, so that's year over year. And in 2006, it was just under 8,000 and now we're a little over 8,500. The population has however also aged, with the median age increasing by almost five years since 2006 when it was 44. And in 2011, it was 47 and is now at 49.2. And Bridgewater has the highest percentage of youth among municipalities in Lunenburg and Queen's County. So this slide is talking about the low-income measure after tax, which is a measure that Census Canada uses to, I think, give us a picture of what, how many households in the community are living with low income. It's an adjusted measure that accounts for the number of people in the household, because as you have more people, the costs go up. So in 2011, this number was 24.4%, so good news. It's down a couple of percentage points from then and is now at 22.4%. When we look at household composition in the town of Bridgewater, we, not even just the town of Bridgewater, but across Lunenburg and Queen's Counties, we see that all the municipal units are experiencing an increase in the number of households, but the size of those households is decreasing. For Bridgewater, overall, the number of households has increased by 13.7% since 2006, or by about 490 households. Bridgewater has the second highest percentage of one-person households in Lunenburg and Queen's County and sits at 36.6%. The only other community that is higher is Mahom Bay at 40%. A number that isn't on this, but when I was looking at the data earlier this morning, I noticed there was something interesting happening around the number of household maintainers. So that's the number of people in the household that are contributing to the income of the household. In 2006, only 0.7% of households had three household maintainers, so those three people contributing to household costs. Whereas in 2016, this was nearing 9%. So it went from 25 households up to 351. So I thought that was an interesting, something that I hadn't noticed for the other municipalities and that's why I hadn't included on the slide until I went through and looked at the report that was, that these numbers are coming from. So something to pay attention to and look at a little bit further. This slide is looking at households by tenure, so who's renting and who's owning. Bridgewater has the highest percentage of the population who rent their home and it is currently at 43.3%, whereas in 2006, it was 36.4%. So that also means that the town of Bridgewater has the lowest percentage of homeowners among the six municipalities at 56.7%, whereas in 2006, it was 63.6%. And in 2016, 215 people were living in subsidized housing, which was down from 385 in 2011. And I don't think that that's because there are fewer subsidized units in the community. I'm wondering if that may have been how people self-reported on their census data or on their census surveys, or if it has something to do with housing subsidies that are available and, or rent supplements, rather than living in public housing, maybe not as many people are receiving rental supplements than had been. I think this slide is probably pretty self-explanatory. It's looking at the median household incomes for various households. So the median household income of all households was $46,836, whereas if we look at the median household income for one-person households, it's $25,626. And lone parent households are around $38,528. There is a slight difference between the before and after tax, but that, those numbers have, the gap between the before and after tax has gotten smaller over the years, which is good. And overall, the median household income has increased by almost $7,000, or 10.8% since 2011. So that's good news. However, that hasn't necessarily translated to changes in terms of core housing need. And some of you may remember, I know I've talked to you about this many times, but a household is in core housing need if it is, if its housing does not meet one of three standards: adequacy, suitability, or affordability. And the affordability standard is kind of the one that we look at the most and that is if they have to spend 30% or more of their before income, before-tax income on household, on housing costs. So overall, within the town of Bridgewater, 27.9% of all households are in core housing need, only 11.4% of homeowners. But if you look at the tenant number, it jumps quite significantly with almost half of all tenants in the town of Bridgewater being in core housing need at 48.6%. So we always get asked, what is affordable? So I kind of did a little bit of the math. I wouldn't say that these are totally accurate, but the number, the math is good. So based on that 30% measure, and if we take the median income of households, we see that in terms of all households, what could be an affordable rent or a housing cost is $1,170, $71. For a lone parent, $963.20. And for a one-person household, $640.65 a month. Now that number, they're not taking into account into the size of housing required for that household. And we don't have data about the rents of various sized units. So we have to assume, you know, a one person is living in a one-bedroom apartment, but that a family would require a larger unit. And this slide feels a little bit out of place for me, but it does add to our understanding of housing challenges in the community. So 56.8% of the housing stock was built almost 40 years ago, or before. Older houses, we know, present challenges in terms of efficiency, they cost more to heat, they require more repairs, more costly repairs and maintenance, all of which add to the costs of shelter for homeowners and tenants alike. So to recap what we saw in the census data for the town of Bridgewater, the population is increasing, slow and steady. The number of households is increasing, but the size is shrinking. 36.6% of households are one-person households. 43% of households rent and 57% own. And almost 30% of all households are in core housing need, nearly 50% of renters. So how does this compare to the other municipalities in Lunenburg and Queen's County? So this slide is showing the rental and ownership costs across Lunenburg and Queen's Counties for each municipal unit. And you'll see that Bridgewater is ranking second, no, third, in terms of rental and ownership costs, behind town of Lunenburg and town of Mahom Bay, which has the highest. And then when we look at median household incomes, Bridgewater is ranking last among municipal units in terms of median household incomes, so it has the lowest median household income. Fourth for median lone parent household incomes. And fifth for median one-person household incomes. And then when we take all that information and look at what an affordable monthly rent would be based on the median household incomes, you see that the gap between what is considered affordable for different households and the average rental costs or housing costs is actually pretty close. So that means that it's a little bit tighter for people. And if you're a one-person household, you can afford about a $641 a month shelter cost, but yet the averages for rentals are 840 or ownership cost at 882, so you're behind already. It's a little bit closer for lone parent, however, we don't know what size unit that is covering as well. And it's closer than it is, that gap is a little bit closer than it is in the other And finally, overall, the town's core housing need ranks third, behind, is it third? No, it's second. No, overall, it is ranking third behind town of Mahom Bay and town of Lunenburg at 27.9%. And the town is tied with Modal for the lowest homeowner core housing need, so that's good news. However, it is tied with Mahom Bay for the highest renter core housing need at 48.6% or almost half. So there's lots to think about with those numbers, a lot to consider. That's all that I have to share with you this evening. I don't have any specific asks of council tonight. I think the numbers are pretty compelling on their own. And I will say that we at SHAC really appreciate the initiative that the town of Bridgewater has taken to look at how they can support lower-income families in this community and we're excited about the transit project and the clean energy, or the Community Energy Sustainability Plan. And we look forward to your continued, continued support of the coalition and your, you know, the work that you do to look at what opportunities exist to improve lives for the residents of Bridgewater and making it a more livable community, which includes improving access to a variety of housing options for all residents.
Great, thank you. Does councillor have any questions?
Just one, there was an observation there. Apartments are on the rise and I think it's about 58%, but as more seniors are moving to Bridgewater and trying to get out of their big houses, then apartments seem to be the best solution for the old residents coming to town. And we have a steady growth in it each year, so that number should rise up considerable in the next two or three years.
Yeah, in terms of the senior.
Percent, senior.
Yeah. And what we're hearing anecdotally from the community, I don't know how the housing support worker's been to present to you folks yet. I know that they're planning to. They've come and shared what they've been learning as they support clients in our community. And it's similar to anecdotally what we've heard over the years. There's such great demand among retirees and seniors in the community that a lot of the units that are available are being rented to them, rather than to other potential tenants, which is understandable from a business perspective. However, it is, people are facing barriers to accessing units in the town. But certainly, Bridgewater is becoming more of a home for, for seniors and so you will see those numbers rising and probably the one-person household, or households also continuing to rise.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, I guess, with 36% of the residents with only one person, there certainly to me is an opportunity for co-living and home sharing, which, which people are talking more and more about, but it might solve some of the affordability issues. We want to thank you for what you're doing at SHAC. I know that councillor Thorburn was, was part of SHAC a couple of years ago, did a great job. I'm currently on that committee, as is Jessica McDonald and people in planning, as well as the Energize Bridgewater. A good focus of that is to, is to combat energy poverty, which should help make the core, the core housing expenses somewhat lower, so.
Yeah, we're very excited about that opportunity. Leon called me last week and like, would SHAC be on board to support any work that we're doing? And I was like, all excited. I was like, yes, whatever you want, we'll do.
I saw the video of the happy dance.
Yeah, yeah, I was. I was kind of like goosebumps and like nodding my head, yes, everything, whatever, whatever you need.
There's lots of information here Nancy and we really appreciate, appreciate all that information and your time.
And thank you to the town for, for all that you've done to pay attention to this issue. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any other delegations that would like to come before councillor? And I believe Mr Woodward, if you'd like to come up to the microphone please, sir. And the rules are pretty simple there, Mr Woodward. We give you two minutes and then we kick you out. I'm joking, sir.
Yeah, that's all right. My name is Lorain Woodward. And for the last three years, my aunt passed away three years ago, and I bought her a monument tomb from Brookside Cemetery, because that's where she wanted to go. I paid $50,000 for it, and a lot. And for the last three years, I've been fighting in there with dogs, going in there and urinating on her tomb and others' tombstones in that cemetery. I've been to the town police, they said nothing we can do. I talked to the park director, nothing we can do. We put signs up, that's all we can do. So my last hope is to hope you folks will ban dogs from that cemetery altogether. I mean, somebody got to have a little respect for these people. Get the good rest in place, that's why they go there. They didn't go there for dogs to come in and urinate on them. And you're going in there and you're pecking around flowers, you're getting them germs off, the dogs urinating and stuff, that's not right. I mean, it's a lovely cemetery and it needs somebody to take control over it. And you folks, I beg, it's my last hope. Over the last three years, I've been arguing with people in there, fighting with them and I'm not getting nowhere. So I'm hoping you folks can help me out in some way. Ban the dogs, they got dog park down Dayspring, let them go down there. There's no tombstones down there for them to urinate on or nothing? But it's heartbreaking when that cemetery has your dogs in there doing that. You've got loved ones in there, you don't want dogs urinating on you. And I plead be you do something if you can. Thank you very much.
Well, Mr Woodward, thank you for your comments. We certainly will, just prior to the meeting, you had a conversation with our CAO, Mr McCollan, and we will, we will look into this for you.
I really appreciate it.
See what we can do for you. Okay, sir?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Before we go, he's a retired town employee for the town of Bridgewater for a long time.
Oh, he was?
Yeah. He drove the sweeper truck, that's when I first met him.
Oh.
Great employee for the town.
Well, thank you for your service, sir. Thank you. Yeah, don't worry, sir.
Folks have a nice day.
You too, sir.
You too.
So you have before you the minutes of February 26th and March 12th. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding those minutes? Hearing none, we'll declare them approved. So we, under planning items, we have an update municipal indicators for energy sustainability Who's going to take that?
It's just a report for update, there's no recommendation associated with it, but it was just to come back to councillor. We were here earlier on in the year requesting direction and permission to apply to the Quest Energy Community Scorecard Project. So we applied and we're one of the six communities chosen, so we're in the company of Calgary, Alberta, Grand Prairie, Alberta, Inuvik Northwest Territories, Yellowknife Northwest Territories, and London, Ontario, and Bridgewater, Nova Scotia. Those are the six scorecard communities. So QUEST Canada stands for, I think it's the Quality Urban Energy Systems of Tomorrow. And they are building capacity for smart energy communities, which they define as communities improving energy efficiency, enhancing reliability, cutting costs, and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. It's a national network, this is a national program. And the goal is some evaluation and benchmarking for Canadian communities that are undertaking such initiatives. And the timeframe is now until September 2019. And there's no cost to the town to participate in this, it's time, time of town, town staff to participate in this. And I think will give us really great information, evaluation, measure our progress of our Community Energy Investment Plan actions. Second component to that, and sort of at the same time, we were approached by the International Institute for Sustainable Development, based out of Winnipeg, Manitoba, to participate in their Community Indicator System project. And CAO brought this forward in January for consideration as another way for us to create measures for monitoring the, and measuring the impact of the Economic Development Action Plan and how do we get to that Awesome Bridgewater Index proposed. And so the International Institute of Sustainable Development is an independent, nonprofit, non-governmental research organization. And they are working with a variety of communities across Canada to develop indicators for community sustainability and wellbeing and set up a web-based platform for those communities to then share that information back to their, their community. So that's another exciting project and I think those two, the scorecard and the Community Indicator System projects will really come together well. Again, the second project with the, the Community Indicator System project again is funded through, they have funding through a foundation, the Echo Foundation. And so there's no direct cost to the municipality other than some staff time and resources in terms of pulling the information together, participating in the workshops and participating in the work, and then continuing the work on beyond the life of the project to keep communicating about Awesome Bridgewater. So some of the other communities that they're working with or starting similar projects with are Cumberland County and the Greater Peterborough area in Ontario.
Does councillor have any questions? So I, you know, the, certainly the scorecard's going to dovetail perfectly with Energize Bridgewater.
Correct.
So just a question in regards to the indicator system, how many other communities are using it? So if one person's comparing themselves against themselves, then it's not much of a comparison, but is this something that's being adopted by many, many communities?
That's a good question, and I don't have the full range of communities that are, that are adopting this, but it's, Winnipeg has developed a community indicator system, it's called mypeg.ca if you want to look it up. And so they're, they're sort of the main community that has been working to develop this model and now they're trying to roll this model out across Canada, so that's sort of where they're at. A variety of different communities have different ways that they try to monitor and communicate what they're doing. And this is just trying to build, I guess, a bit more of a standardized one. And one that is built off of information that's already available, so you're not having to collect primary data every year in order to keep it up. And that's a big, that was a big factor in our deciding to pursue that partnership because we don't want to have to spend our time all year collecting information to then report on the information. If there's other bodies that are already collecting that information, then that makes it easier for us.
I believe that mypeg is also a partnership with United Way of Winnipeg.
Yeah, I believe it was.
Is there anybody in that? Does anybody have any other, any questions? So moving along then, under correspondence for information, we have a request for repayment of a BDA loan for the Bridgewater Marina. Richard, I guess you want to take that?
Sure. So we received this request from the Marina Association a little while ago. And on initial review of the request with our solicitor, we were advised and reminded that the municipality doesn't have the legitimate authority to, to provide such a loan. So the staff will need to work with the Marina in terms of payments of its existing obligations and will need to come back to councillor following that discussion to advise what sort of options councillor may have with responding to this request.
Yeah, I believe this loan was from the BDA.
That's right.
Come under BDA's.
That's right.
Yeah, so, okay.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Just a comment, I guess, a few years ago, through, through, I guess, the year the town of Bridgewater gave or granted the Bridgewater Marina $60,000 to get, to get themselves up and started, so certainly we're doing our best. So moving along.
Councillor, yes, it's kind of cool.
Sorry. Just to comment on that, the marina has, from my point of view at least, become a very important asset to our river and to our town. It's established itself and it looks like it's going to be very successful. So it's an important thing and they may want to expand and I'd like to see that happen.
Good point. Anyone else? So there is no correspondence for action, we do have some reports and some recommendations, the first one being field usage fees. I guess, are you taking that on too, Richard?
Sure. So this has been an ongoing file for quite some time with councillor, is the consideration and ongoing discussions around field user fees. You've got a report in front of you with a recommendation and some background that goes back 10 or 15 years in terms of the history around field user fees in the town of Bridgewater. Basically, the key thing here is we incur about $50,000 a year in expenses in operating the fields and are currently getting very nominal revenue from users. And staff are recommending that we implement an affordable fee for minor sports to move towards some contributions of users towards the expenses of operating and maintaining the sports fields in the town of Bridgewater.
Does anybody have any comments, questions?
Would you like to have a motion?
No. Any comments? Do you want to put it?
Yes, I will. I move the town council for town of Bridgewater approve inclusion of the recommended field usage fee sketch. field usage fee schedule, is contained in document 18-045 and policy 89 fees, and that the amended policy be presented for council approval at a future meeting of council.
Do we have a second, or, Mr. Thorburn? Any discussion?
Only comment, the, the fees are not onwards at all, from my point of view, when you compare it to other fees that are charged for the arena or the pool, that type of thing. So I think it's a step in the right direction, and it's a label as to put more, more money back into the fields.
Counselor, if you're here.
Yeah, I'll just make a comment, 'cause I know the weight is more on the adult usage of, of the user fees. When we look back, just an observation, many, many coach volunteers are, still continue to play sports themselves, so you wanna be able to find that balance as to what, what is, I understand that we're trying to keep it affordable for youth, but also don't wanna heavily weigh the adult usage fees, 'cause I think there is a benefit for keeping it affordable for them, because they, they volunteer and they are the coaches for a lot of the youth teams, so I just wanted to make that comment.
I guess my comment would be the, that the high school, the Bridgewater Elementary School, they use about 350, maybe 400 hours per year. Their, all the, their parents live within the town of Bridgewater, so they're already paying some type of tax. Some people say maybe a little bit too much tax. Those two schools do not have an actual playing field, so they're kind of forced to go to a, to a third-party place to, to do their, do their soccer, or whatever it is they do. If the students have to start paying for that, the money's either gonna come from their parents, the taxpayer, or the parent, or the money's gonna come from the community, which is generally when they do a house-to-house to, to sell something to the taxpayers or the residents of the town of Bridgewater, in order to raise enough money so that they can have the money to go and play sports and soccer. Personally, my preference would be that, that we give an opportunity for schools not to pay for field usage. That still means that there's 3,500 people, or 3,500 other hours, which is considerable, where, where we're getting some income for the property. So that would be, I don't know if we can adjust the, the fees at a later date, or once they're approved here, or does it make sense to, to, if council's in agreement, obviously, to forego the fee to the schools, or can we work this into the new agreement that we're working with the school? Any comments on that?
Sure, through the chair, the council. So we can implement whatever is the will of council, we haven't discussed this with the schools yet, and as you've indicated, there has been previous interest in the town developing a field usage agreement with, with the school board. So it would certainly be at the will of council to waive or change any fees at the will of council, so if we received a request from the school with regards to that, that's something that the town would be able to be responsive to fairly quickly. Obviously, at this point, we haven't received anything from them on the matter.
So just, if we approve the motion as, as it is now, the fees will be applied to the schools, but, but a month from now or a couple of weeks from now, we could rescind those fees as well, if we're not?
Council always has the authority to set, change fees at its own, at its, at its wish.
Counselor.
These, this infrastructure's a very important asset to the community, most of them very well-used. Is there any benefit to creating a reserve, and I believe actually Counselor Tanner had brought this up in the past as well, is there any benefit or reason not to set up a reserve so that the fees go into that and are directly used for maintaining or upgrading the facilities?
Through the chair, I'll ask if Dawn can, can help me navigate that answer.
We can certainly create a reserve. We would bring, there, there are a number of reserve policies that we wanna look at, so this could certainly be one of them if, if council wishes.
Does the amount of money that it would represent warrant that? It's not a huge amount of money, it's not, you know, we're not gonna be able to resurface a, a field or something, I don't even know if that's the right word, Larry's probably laughing over there, but is it enough money to, to go to that effort, or is it pretty nominal and?
It's a pretty nominal amount, but I suppose that, you know, it could be saved towards, you know, some larger project or something like that, and Larry may wanna wade in there too, because, you know, they, they do budgets to make sure the fields are kept in good shape. Are there larger projects that might benefit from reserve funding?
Potentially, I guess, down the road, there's always the possibility that, you know, something may come up. For example, we resurfaced the Kingsman Field over the last little bit. There's nothing that we're aware of that I can think of off the top of my head that we would be planning for.
Okay.
Counselor Thorburn.
Dawn, Larry, Jessica, either one can jump in. Where does the money go now that we collect for fees? Does it just, does it go back, is it charged against that field usage account, or is it just going to a general account?
It, it just goes to a general account, and I think it's pretty minimal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because it's, seems highly unlikely to be a long walk before you ever get cost-neutral, and the fees should really go against that account as a revenue source to offset the expense, I would think.
It does all come out in the wash, though, at the end of the day. And the other comment I would make is, you know, my point about saving for something would be the reason to create a reserve. There's not much point in creating a reserve if you're gonna every year go and say, well, we'll put this reserve money towards the field, 'cause that happens organically. You know, the reason to create a reserve would be to save for something that is a larger project.
So this money, it's both $50,000 to operate the fields and to maintain the fields, and this, this revenue source, this new revenue source will generate about $15,000. So while it's better than the thousand or fifteen hundred we got now, it's, it's still nowhere close to cost recovery. So is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? So, policy, one second, sorry about that. So we have a preapproval of 2018, 2019 capital budget, a police car. Another one.
So I'll speak to that, and then if there are questions, Scott can answer. So this comes from the Police Commission meeting of March 1st, so it didn't come with the other preapprovals, because the Police Commission had to approve it first. So Scott is wanting to get out and, and get the car, get the cars ordered so that they can be in service sooner than waiting for the, the budget to be approved. And if this is approved, there will be two police cars this year. One is on the carry-forward list, which is a couple of reports down the road here, and then this is an additional one.
Does anyone have any questions? Dawn or Deputy Chief Feener?
I guess, in normal practice for budgets, is when, I guess, replacement cars are, are planned, do we usually have that in the forecasted budget, like owed into future years? So I guess, was this one just came up because there was a definite need?
No, I think, yeah.
So on our, on our replacement, obviously, most of the council, we want four marked cars, which run 24/7, seven days a week. In addition to that, we have two other service vehicles, one would be the SSRO van, which is 11 years old, so we'll be looking to replace that one next year. And actually, this year, we're looking to replace the K9 vehicle, it's an operational police vehicle specifically, you know, for, for PST Davis. It is eight years old with 160,000 kilometers on it, so the costs are starting to override the, the efficiency of it, and, you know, having a service dog, it's not like a large investment like that, we can stick in the back of a normal marked car or get a car for it quickly, so it takes time to, to order that and make sure we're able to go and keep our, our service dog operational.
And, and if you do look out into the future years, you'll see police cars, I don't recall if it was one in?
There, there was one in this year, yeah, originally. It kinda gets bumped, you know, we have a replacement every three years, the marked cars get replaced, we get one one year, one the next year, and the year number three, you get basically two cars, and then we start all back over. The unfortunate thing is, we have two other operational vehicles that we are getting to the end of their life with eight and 11 years that are timed to be replaced. Once this one is replaced, it goes longer than the normal three years for a marked car, because it's driven by one person for a specific reason. So it'll be on, you know, another seven or eight years, it'll be operational.
So there were actually two police cars in year two of last year's capital budget, one marked control vehicle and, and one K9 vehicle, and I guess we talked to none of
Counselor Thorburn.
I think, Chief, we also last year, did we buy two used vehicles?
No, not last year.
Year before?
Yeah, the year before, we bought a, a leased vehicle.
Right, a leased vehicle.
To go into admin. That's usually what we do for our two admin cars.
I guess my comment would be, you know, we're 13 square kilometers, we're a small town, five square miles, and we certainly seem to be buying a lot of police cars, and I guess the question would be, how do we compare against other communities like Amers and Trill in terms of their police car purchases? We certainly wanna make sure that you got the tools to do the job.
All of them are roughly three to four years, depending on service use, and like I say, the cars are drove 24/7, and we find our maximum between 120 to 140 kilometers, 100,000 kilometers, once we get above that, it's costing us more to keep them on the road than, you know, the purchase of a new one for operational needs.
Okay, and do we, do we spend a lot of time outside of town? Like our, our cars?
Our cars, no, not our marked cars, the, the K9 does, it travels to the city once a month for training, obviously, he's coming up for recertification through the Canadian Police Chief's K9 certification, which is required annually, so we do train with health access initially where the dog was trained.
And then we've got detectives, I guess, that spend time outside?
Correct, but not with marked cars, them are leased vehicles, that, them are all through the operational budget.
Okay, and is there any, is there any grants available for that?
Uh, no.
Lovely. Thank you. Any, oh, Counselor.
You indicated the mileage of it would 160,000, there are really more miles than that, 'cause those cars idle a lot as well.
That's right, the K9 runs from the time he starts till the time he's off, whether it's in the winter time to keep the dog warm, or air conditioning in the summertime.
Yeah, so, so there's a lot more actual miles per se, because they're sitting idling a lot.
Yeah, you can, you can probably double the amount of kilometers on it, so if it's 130,000 on the marked car, it's probably 220, 240, just sitting there.
You mentioned that some, some vehicles are leased, some are purchased, I, I guess...
Yeah, we purchase all our marked vehicles, all our operational policing vehicles, our GIS and, and SKU vehicles are leased for a period of three to four years, depending on the best contract we can get.
I guess that was just my question is to, to buy versus lease, is there, I'm sure there's been?
It's always a struggle, to, to, so sometimes we do buy them out and we use them in our, as an admin vehicle for, for guys away from courses and so on. This year, our lease is going back, it's no need, we're not replacing any of the admin
So anyone have any more questions? Hearing none, is somebody prepared to put a motion? Counselor Thorburn.
I would move that town of Bridgewater pre-approved the purchase of a marked police vehicle in the amount of $37,500 in the 2018, 2019 budget.
Second.
Second, or?
Question?
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, great. Get yourself a car.
You vote for me.
Counselor Thorburn.
Chief, I was at Trill on the weekend, and they have a big K9 on their vehicle, I hope for the hours will have the same thing, for identification.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, this is the first time we actually have a real K9 vehicle, obviously, we repurposed one of our, our older cars in order to get the, the program up and running and, and served its purpose for basically three years, so it will be an SUV, it will be white, and then we'll, we'll be going from there. We have to weigh the odds, some, it has its pros and cons, both for the public, like people are aware of what it is, and then the cons are that some people tend to take action against dogs, because the windows are always down, so if they throw something in through the screen, then it could cause the dog harm, so it's, it's definitely something to look at.
I, I know it stood out when I seen it in Trill coming down the street, so...
They had a truck which they've just replaced, I believe, the new SUV.
And, and the other thing, I think the preapproval is because it takes so long to get your police vehicle.
Yeah, so last year I asked for a preapproval in April, and it wasn't until September, until we received the car. Basically, the dealers build cars, they shut down the plant, and they convert it over, and they build for three weeks straight. Last year, Ford built, our car was built on July 27th, even though we had preapproval in April. It's the best deal, and, and we try to get through as long as we can.
I had no idea, no, they did that, pretty cool.
That's what they do, they have all the dealerships shut down for, for basically a couple of weeks and build police package vehicles.
Good, thanks, Chief.
So moving along, we have Bridgewater Transit Pilot Project Advertising Policy Proposed Amendments. Have you taken that, Jessica?
Thank you. This is just, sorry, a report recommending amendments to the current advertising policy for the Bridgewater Transit Pilot Project, further to council's resolution from the last meeting, and extending transit operations to March 31st, 2019. So this is to enable the advertising on, that's currently on the bus to continue, and for us to continue to seek additional advertising beyond the end of the pilot, which, the end of this week. There's just some small changes mostly in the wording, 'cause otherwise it doesn't, it doesn't fit, so.
So just mostly housekeeping?
Mostly housekeeping, actually, all housekeeping. And for the most part, the current advertisers, most of the current advertisers are wanting to stay, there's one advertiser who will be hopping off, and new, new inquiries for new advertisements coming onboard, so.
Thrilled, as I understand it, you're, you're ahead of projections in terms of the advertising dollars?
Yes, we are.
Absolutely awesome, so for those, those companies that have supported it, thank you, thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions? Is someone prepared to put a motion? Sorry, Counselor Fugere?
Yes, I'll forward a motion, that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the amendments to policy 90, Bridgewater Transit Pilot Project Advertising as presented in document 17-171A, and implement the amended policy as policy 90, Bridgewater Transit Project Advertising Effective Immediately.
Is there a second, or? Counselor McDonald? Any further discussion?
Question?
Question? All those in favor? Great, thank you. So we have some carry-forward for the capital budgets, some information in your package. You gonna take that, Dawn?
Yes, please. So there are a number of projects that, that won't be completed by March 31st, therefore we require a carry-forward approved by council. You'll notice that, that the number at the bottom, remaining budget, is almost $4 million, but do keep in mind that about a million of that is the fire truck, which we're, is due to arrive anytime, but probably won't be in service by March 31st, and the anaerobic digester cover belt press, which has been on hold waiting for a funding announcement. So that's a significant portion of that. I'd just also point out that the remaining budget at this point may be not what actually gets carried forward, because we'll carry forward whatever's left once all the invoices are in for March 31st. So as invoices come in, that number will go down. I'd also point out in the report, the North Parcade Beautification Project, that one's being carried forward in order to do the repairs on the parcade, the beautification won't be done, but the repairs on the parcade will. And the other thing is, if you're noticing, that we've included the increased budget for the anaerobic digester cover, it was discussed by council on January 8th, but there wasn't a formal approval of the increase to the budget, so that's included as part of this report. And if you have questions on specific... And if you have questions on specific projects, I'll go look to my right.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Counselor McGinnis.
Yes, uh, I would assume that the remaining budget is enough to cover each one of those. For instance, Wi-Fi, there's ten thousand dollars left, ten thousand three sixty-two. I'm assuming that's enough with all of them that's gone through.
Correct. Any other questions? Counselor Thorburn.
Don, when I went through that, it seems to me I found some, I don't have that report with me, that was actually carried over from sixteen to seventeen.
There would be some, yeah.
You know, if they're that critical and ranked that high, why such a time delay of getting these projects done? Because it's tying up money that could be doing other projects that can be done on time.
Well, it would depend on the, the specific project. I mean, I think, you know, one example might be the, the radio tower replacement that has been carried forward a couple of years, and I know that, that Larry can speak to it better than I can, but there have been some struggles in terms of trying to find a solution for that. So if you, if, you know, with each individual project, there would be a reason, but, I mean, did you want to speak to the radio tower replacement as an example?
If that's the wish of Counselor Thorburn.
No, 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 I just wanted, just trying to put a handle on it, why, I can understand the need for it, but I, sometimes two years, and that's not the only one, but we can talk about it at a later date. That's all.
Counselor McDonald.
Um, the engineering design of the stair relocation for the fire hall. Uh, the actual relocation is in the capital budget, if I'm not mistaken. Am I wrong there?
Uh, no, but it got moved, I think, in the last round.
Oh, that's right, that's right, okay. Yeah, I was just a little bit concerned about assigning an amount to it before the design has even been done and how that, that works, but if it's been moved, then there's time. Okay.
Any other questions? So I have two. One of them also does, is the engineering design for the stair relocation. As I remember that, the purpose of doing the stair relocation was to provide additional space at the fire hall, so the fire hall could then entertain, bringing in other groups, and I think one of the groups suggested it was the army cadets that do their marching bands. But CEO McClellan is of the opinion, and I don't disagree, that we should be working with our partners in the community, so things like the LCLC, things like the Field House. So if we're, if we're building stairs to accommodate more community groups, but at the same time pushing those community groups to other organizations in the community, do we actually really need the stairs, is the question? As I understand, that's the way it was set up, or the need was explained that way. Counselor Thorburn.
If I can answer, I wish the chief was here, but I don't ever remember that being a reason for extending that, and it's not that big an area. It, it gives them a fair amount of usage downstairs for materials, and as he adds stuff someplace to put it, but it's not enough areas to have a different type band in there. It's just, you're not talking that much square foot each month.
It's not okay, sure?
No.
That's the first time I heard that.
Yeah, me too.
It was simply to gain floor space that the fire department didn't have right now.
Okay, which they need.
Yes.
Okay, so the second question is in regards to the new permit spaces in Town Hall Parking Lot. I've been through the Town Hall Parking Lot quite a bit, as long, as well along the street, and there's a lot of parking spaces open. So I guess the question is, do we really need that space now, or? Like that, you know?
Oh, the, that, that was intended, that's intended to develop an area close to Phoenix Street for additional parking. At the time, there was certainly thoughts that, you know, we'll need additional parking to help offset the loss of the North Parkade. And with this recent, South Parkade, sorry. And, and with the selling of permits just starting recently, you know, we may see an increase in use in the back parking lot as well.
I'd also just want to add that with the fire on King Street earlier this year, we've lost a lot of tenants who would have been using the back parking lot, so it does appear more spacious since the fire and the loss of those properties.
Good point. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Oh, sorry, Counselor McDonald.
Uh, does it make sense to hold off on that for a little while, till we've been through a summer and maybe have some indication of what's happening with the properties where they, where the fire was?
It's certainly an option that we entertain.
Does anyone have any more questions? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor Thorburn?
I will. I guess I complain the most, I best, I'm in relation for it. I would move that Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Director of Finance to carry forward unspent two thousand seventeen, eighteen capital budgets to two thousand eighteen, nineteen, as contained in Document seventeen dash two oh one D.
And do we have a second or? Counselor FuJer? Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor? Great, thank you. We do have, we've got a couple of minutes before seven o'clock. We do have some business arising and some unfinished business. Uh, Bridgewater Elementary School Playground Committee requests bridge of spurgesment of funds. Last, last meeting, the council was in a tie vote, and we voted down giving Bridgewater Elementary School some, some money because we were looking for some additional information from staff, and we were looking for additional information from, from the school, which I believe is, is going to be forthcoming, but we have to, I think is the word we send?
Reconsider.
Reconsider.
However, could you go back to the prior topic? I believe there was a motion that should have been brought forward from the Director's Report for an increase of ten thousand five hundred dollars to the budget for the wastewater treatment plant, anaerobic digester cover Phase One and Two Project.
So can we add that to the original motion made by Counselor Thorburn?
Sure, it's not in the script.
No, it isn't.
Oh, disappeared.
No, it wasn't there.
Okay. Oops.
Okay, so we can add that to the, to your motion there, Counselor Thorburn?
I think what you have to do is make an amendment to the motion and then have an amended motion to deal with it properly.
Another motion would be perfect if you'd like to go by the report.
Yep.
And you're making that motion?
Does everyone understand the motion?
Could you read it?
Yes.
Please.
Uh, that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve an increase of ten thousand five hundred dollars to the budget for the wastewater treatment plant, anaerobic digester cover Phase One and Two Project.
Thank you.
Great, do we have a second on that?
I'll second the motion.
Any questions?
Question.
All those in favor? Great, thank you. Well, thank you. Great. So, Counselor FuJer?
Yes, I would like to give notice of reconsideration of the motion eighteen dash zero one, sorry, eighteen dash zero five seven of the Bridgewater Elementary Playground at the next regular council meeting on April ninth.
Okay, great. Hope you can read that. But thanks for that. Great, okay. Uh, and it's almost seven, so we have budget.
Question, did we vote on that motion? It moved in segment.
Yeah.
On what one? For the reconsideration.
Yeah. Just a notice, it's, okay. Sir, great.
Okay, so we have some budget deliberations. Just wants to walk us through that.
Um, happy to turn this over to Dawn. We had a discussion session last week on the proposed capital budget list. Uh, council provided some, some comments, primarily looking for us to make some reductions so that there's not an increase to our, to our debt. Uh, as such, staff went away, and over the last week, made some adjustments to the capital budget, which you'll see in page one of your report. Um, there's about a dozen projects that have been removed or pushed out. Uh, I'll note, so we fixed for twenty eighteen, nineteen. However, we will have to do more work and policy work with regards to future years. So year two, year three, year four of the five-year capital budget don't meet that direction at, at this point. Maybe Dawn can, can take it further.
Sure, I don't really have much else to add. We haven't, as you can see, most of the projects that, that were moved ahead a year. So, so the next year is worse than it was to begin with, and then some of the out-years also require some work. So, so there need, needs to be some work done this year on debt policy, so we're all clear on, on how we move forward with debt. And, but it's not something that's going to be accomplished in time for the budget this year. So understanding that the out-years need some work.
Does anybody have any questions? Counselor McGinnis.
Uh, I'm going to try and create a little more work for you, if I may.
Always helping.
Uh, this year, we are what I call debt neutral. We're paying back nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in the principal of our debt, but we're borrowing another nine hundred and some odd thousand dollars. That is reasonable, but not good enough. Uh, if we hope to do any major projects in the future, we should be reducing our debt each and every year. Uh, so next year, I personally would like to see a reduction in our, in the principal on our twelve outstanding debt. Should be at least a half million to a million dollars a year, or certainly a half million. So that's going to put pressure on future projects. But it's, it's, you just cannot continually increase your debt every year because, you know, I go back to the downtown project we had just completed. If we had not reduced our debt considerably over the years, that project would not have been done because we had the capacity to borrow to do it. So it's, it's great that we remain neutral this year, debt neutral, but I would like personally, and I'm against council's decision, but I think it'd be a good policy to, for the next two, three, four years, to see a reduction in the principal of our debt.
Something else that's going to help is the wastewater rates. As they start to increase, then, then the intent is, like water, that they would recover depreciation as well eventually. It's not going to happen overnight, but in the future, that will provide funding for wastewater as well, which we all know needs a lot of work.
Yep, so if I may, so it's the intent of, of staff to spend some time with council discussing policy around capital because as well with that pressure to make, to work on reducing our debt, we also know that we're going to have pressure to maintain our assets. Our, our infrastructure deficit is generally too big and increasing, we're not closing it, and we're going to need to do that. What that ultimately means is we're going to need to get more and more focused on what are our core municipal services and start looking at where we spend our money, because that will come down to looking at, you know, our operating budget and, you know, where are we going to create capacity to do those things. So those are discussions that are going to take some time, some, some good advice from both Larry and, and Dawn, and we look forward to working on some policy basis for that, for that long-term debt.
Counselor McGinnis.
If I may, and I, I think that's a good strategy, but, and I'm going to say something that maybe I shouldn't say, uh, but I'm going to say it anyway. If the province and the feds treated the towns with population of over five thousand people equal to rural municipalities, we would not be having this discussion. If we were treated equal, we'd probably add another couple of million dollars to our revenue each and every year. As most of you know, and I've said it many times around this table, you know, the municipality don't pay for their roads. We have a public works department, we have to do them all, and we have provincial roads running right through town that we pay for and don't reimburse for. Policing, policing has subsidized municipality up to thirty percent. We have to pay a hundred percent of our policing costs. And we don't qualify for subsidization, subsidization because apparently the magic number's five thousand residents, which makes no sense to anyone I've ever talked to. So those are discussions we got to have in a serious manner with our MLA, our MP, and with the province.
Agreed. Does anybody have any questions? Counselor Thorburn.
I, I agree with Counselor McGinnis. I, I think the big thing that has to, the dialogue has to begin with the province and the feds because the fee, the, the structure is not fair because the youth population is a key indicator. But a lot of rural units don't have the infrastructure, but they got a good reserve. We have the infrastructure and we're poor because we can't afford a million dollars which we should be spending at least a year on our streets to get them paid. And it's all because of funding for them. There's going to be no more money. So there's winners and losers, and back in two thousand twelve, we went to a couple of meetings on the problems, was going to look at changes. It didn't go anywhere. It didn't change one thing to help small towns.
Too many voters in that, in that rules.
Yeah.
All we ask for is equal treatment.
Fairness.
Totally agree. So I just, if I may, in regards to a couple of the, the cuts, the project cuts, so thank you for, for finding that five hundred thousand dollars that we asked you to find, much appreciated. There are two, a little bit of concern. One is the crosswalk improvements, and the other one is the audible alarms. And I'm just wondering if we're, if we're targeting people that are maybe, have issues related to some type of disability, and is there a way of, of cutting something else to put those in, or am I misreading what these two projects are trying to accomplish?
Uh, the crosswalk improvement program's a yearly program, so we're just proposing for one year not to do it. We do have maintenance money in sidewalks and curbs and things like that as well that may get used for things like that, um, as well as some of the sidewalk upgrades may encompass some of the crosswalks as well. Uh, as far as the audible alarms, we are installing, uh, new traffic lights at Old Bridge and La Havre that would encompass these new alarms anyhow. We also have some audible alarms that did not get installed this year that will be installed, so it's not that we're not doing anything toward that type of work. It's, um, we do have some planned work in that area.
And for those particular, two items in particular, did you contact or talk with the active transportation during Bridgewater, that department, just to see what they thought of the? In, in terms of?
Well, certain projects like the traffic light upgrades, active transportation played a part in that with some recommendations, um, to make around that intersection. But the audible alarms are part of what they would like to see. Uh, and again, it's a yearly program. We've installed a number of them around town already, and will be installing more this coming year with the equipment that we currently have.
Okay, so, okay.
So it will continue beyond?
It's a multi-year.
It's just, yeah, multi-year.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, I understand it's multi-year, but if we're cutting twenty-four thousand dollars this year, then that's twenty-four thousand dollars that's not helping people that, that kind of need it. You know what I mean? We're still doing it, we're just not doing as much, right?
I, I guess that's one way of looking at it, yes.
Yeah, so that's just the way I, though I see it. So and then when you look through the, through some of the items, uh, the forklift is twenty thousand dollars, which is about the same price as the, um, the crosswalk improvements and the audible alarms. Do we, have we ever had a forklift before?
No, we currently use one of our large loaders, and we have to switch out the, the buckets with the forks. And part of the rationale for the forklift is, um, we're proposing to have a, a new inventory building at Public Works, so this forklift could actually go inside and help get that inventory offloaded from the trucks and, and placed directly inside. So there's a bit of a, 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 I guess, a multi-purpose use for the forklift.
Okay, and then there's also Generations Park, uh, Phase One D, so it's, it's development of a secondary recreation trail, four hundred and fifty meters, uh, route around the roundhouse. Is this something new? So this is a project that we've talked about in the past, right?
This, this is the, uh, another development near the dog park that is consistent with the master plan for Generations Active Park. So I'm not sure if you can visualize it, but it's to connect the, kind of the bottom loop to make a loop or another outside loop around the dog park. So it, it is outlined in the master plan.
Okay.
Uh, so it's just another phase of the. So, it's just another phase of the trail system that was proposed in the master plan.
Proposed, yeah. So, then the question might be, is that more important than the crosswalks and the audible alarms? Do you know what I mean?
That can be a decision of council.
And then the other one is also for about the same prices as the audible alarms and the crosswalk is the police department interview room. I don't know enough about it. It's just, it's an update. You know, the, the police station's what, ten years old, nine years old?
And, and I guess my only comment there would be that, that, that's coming, that was approved by the police commission. So, you know, I, I expect you perhaps could send direction back to them to cut their capital budget, but I'm not sure you, we can remove, council can remove specific projects?
Well, as I said earlier, I guess my, my concern would really only be about the crosswalks and the audible alarms. But, you know, just that, that is helping people that could use help. And, you know, if there's something else that we could cut in order to save that, then to me, that's a good thing.
So, it, it's entirely up to council. I mean, it's just twenty-four thousand dollars. So, Larry was just saying we could just add it back in. Or, if it's council, you know, if it's council's wish, then we can trade it out for another project, Generations Active Park, or whichever council chooses. And what we've done in the past during budget debate is just to kind of go around the table and, and see who wants to do what so that we can get some direction.
Councilor Freejair, sorry, Councilor McDonald.
What is the downtown plan, small cap?
That was me.
That was pedestrian counters.
Through the, through the, through the chair to council. So, I had asked to put in some money for two things. One, about ten thousand dollars to put in some infrastructure to count pedestrians. And secondly, some money to allow for public art. And we've found another place in the operating budget where we'll be able to respond to a, a public art project. But, we're going to just put off the pedestrian counters for now until we do some more work around downtown.
Councilor McDonald.
For public art projects, you found somewhere else in the budget to help fund a public art project?
I can't remember where.
We moved it to operating.
Yes, we moved it to operating, yes.
Would we not apply to like Visual Arts Nova Scotia or somewhere like that before taking the funding out of our budget?
We would. So, we've just have five thousand dollars allocated. You know, we'd need to do some policy, have some discussion with the downtown planning advisory committee. I just wanted to put, because it was something that was identified in the economic development action plan, I wanted to put in some seed money to enable us to do something with it this year. But certainly, there's some other opportunities to leverage that up quite a bit, I believe.
Sorry. Councilor Thorburn.
Just one, we just carried forward ten thousand dollars for fire. Was that for this stair project or was that for the tower?
That was for the stairs.
And yet, we've cut it?
Well, we've moved it out a year.
Another year.
So, we would have to carry it again next year.
Have to carry it again next year. Okay. Hopefully, the fire chief was part of that deliberation.
Yes.
Councilor McDonald.
The connector trail Alexandra, is that Alexandra Drive? And what does it connect?
That was, so there, in the carry forward, there's money to develop a trail from Alexandra to Duck Pond. What it didn't take into account at the time was barrier-free access.
Okay.
So, this here, fourteen thousand dollars was actually in addition to the ten to allow us to do barrier-free. So, there wouldn't be barrier-free access from Alexandra down to the Duck Pond.
So, there will be an access developed, but it won't be barrier-free?
Correct.
That seems important to me. It's a public park. Okay, that one's on my list. Can I ask for more detail about what makes that barrier-free?
Basically, the slope.
Okay.
With the, we want to meet wheelchair requirements of one and twelve. So, a direct path down which people are using now would meet those requirements. So, it would have to be some type of a snake approach with some retaining walls to create a hot surface.
Okay.
Does anybody else want to?
I have one more.
Sure.
Would the rest of the trail around the pond be considered barrier-free?
Certainly parts of it would be and parts of it.
A pretty good part of it at this point, wouldn't it?
Yeah, depending on which entrance you come in from, you know, you could access a lot of it barrier-free.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. I think staff did an excellent job. I went through those and I had all those earmarked that they should be cut. So, I think they did a great job.
I agree. With the exception of the audible alarm for the first.
But, and I agree with you. And that's like motherhood. I can't argue against that. But, we are doing some, and we do some every year. And we have a lot in town compared to other towns I've been in. An awful lot. And that's not to say we shouldn't have more. We absolutely should. But sometimes you got to walk before you run.
Great. Oh, sorry.
So, is there any will to do some straw votes on any changes? Or, are you happy to come, if we come forward with this, the, the budget binder is coming up?
Wouldn't be any fun unless we do it budget night.
I feel pretty strongly about that, that connector trail, but making it barrier-free. If we're going to do it, we might as, I think it's important to do it so that it's accessible to everyone.
I agree.
So, is that, you're suggesting we add it back or replace something with it? Or?
I'm requesting that we add it back.
Add it back.
Do we all do a straw vote on that? How do people feel about that?
And this is from the street down to the pond right now?
Correct. That, that park's there. And I've been here for thirty-nine years, it's been like this. And I know it's something we maybe should be doing, but.
They've done a lot of work on that.
They've done a lot of work, and I think you can take a year off. I, I think that's, you just can't do everything.
Councilor McDonald.
If we're going to do part of the trail, but it's not going to be barrier-free, and we go back and do the barrier-free component later, does it end up costing us more or is it still possible?
I would probably suggest if we're thinking of doing barrier-free in two years' time, we don't do any.
That would be my suggestion, too. Either do it or don't do it.
Do it all at the same time.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I, I'd say that just because it's been one way for a number of years and that residents of our community have not been able to access it, doesn't mean that it should always be that way. We should, you know, build an awareness and, and fix things like that.
Okay.
So, right now, you come on the sidewalk and then there's kind of, if you're at the sort of top, you know, Park Street, and you come down, there's kind of a paved section, and then it drops to a gravel pathway going down. So, are you, have you looked at what the barrier-free would look like there?
We, yes, preliminary look at, and, and again, it would involve snaking in order to achieve that maximum slope of one and twelve. So, we'd be.
A concrete path or how?
It would just be gravelled, I believe.
Gravel, okay.
I could be wrong on that. I'm not sure if the estimate included asphalt or just gravel.
So, to answer your question, certainly from my point of view, this is the getting back to the crosswalks and getting back to the audible signals. I wouldn't mind talking with staff and, and getting, you know, maybe, maybe I'm blowing this up into something it's not, but I'll talk to staff. And if, if, if there's a, an interest or I think that it's needed, then, then I would like to see them put on. But if not, I'm fine.
Okay. So, so back, so we'll leave that one for now and to be discussed further if required.
Yep.
The, the trail, we had two asking for it to be added back. Are you, what, what else?
So, I think the trail was supposed to be taken off. So, when it's, when it's done, it's done to a standard that makes it accessible. Is that, is that how I understood that?
No. And the first one that I voted for was to have the accessibility there when you do the work, not cut it.
So, the initial discussion was to add fourteen, this fourteen thousand that was cut, add it back?
Mm-hmm.
So, you have two that support that? What about everybody else?
And if, I may, I understand that the other option is to take it.
We're talking about the trail, connector trail for Alexandra.
Accessibility.
This is the Alexander Park.
Right. The other option is to take it off and do it a few years in the future and do it all at once. But, we look, we're looking at a list of pressures that we're creating on the future budget. Accessibility to a park is easily going to be dropped when we're looking at our future pressures, as well as the ones that we've now got listed here. And I think making sure that seniors, strollers, people with mobility issues can access our parks, especially one with excellent shading and excellent surface for walking. I, I think that's really important. And it's too easy for, to get lost if we say we'll do it later.
But it still won't be to a standard that it's accessible, will it?
That's what I'm asking for.
If we add it back.
If we add it back, it'll be.
What's still others?
Thoughts? Anybody want to back in?
Back in for this year.
For this year.
For this year, yeah.
Yeah. Yes?
Yes.
I'm in favor if they're going to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, do it right. Do it the first time.
Yeah, I agree. So, in terms of something now has to come out? And that'll be, I guess, have to staff to make that decision.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, the cut was five hundred and six, so fourteen thousand, excuse me, isn't going to push us over. I think debt went down to nine hundred and one.
Yeah.
So, the debt will go back up by fourteen thousand, but it's still within a range, probably.
That's livable.
That would be acceptable.
And what about that loop that's in Generations Active Park 1D?
Well, it, it's still there unless count, somebody puts it on the table for it to come out.
Just a question on that, if I may. That particular park, is that some funding from the government coming in that as well?
We haven't applied for funding to date.
Okay. But normally, we do, don't we, for parks and get cost sharing on some of that stuff?
So, if we are looking for the fourteen grand, one way of doing that is taking out 1D at, at Generations Active Park, finishing off one trail so it's one hundred percent good to go, and then working on the next one. Something considered?
Can I ask something just to make sure? Larry, in terms of staffing impact, does that, and we might have to take away, does that interrupt your ability to balance your staffing? If you remove the twenty-five thousand dollar, or do you have enough carry forward?
It potentially could mean that some of the staff may get laid off earlier. But, there's probably going to be different work groups involved in the two projects. So, it may mean that one of the work groups may get laid off a little bit earlier than last year or the year before, but not, but still typical from previous years beyond two years ago. If that makes sense to you.
So, that's a fourteen thousand dollar saving. Sorry, that's a twenty-five thousand dollar savings. Fourteen thousand dollars goes into the trail. There's eleven thousand dollars left over and a ten thousand need for crosswalks. So, would that, could that staff then be used to do the crosswalks? And then, it'd be certainly.
It would be a different work group.
Totally different. Thoughts? I certainly think if you're going to build a trail, you may as well build it, get it done, do it right.
So, right now, the only change I have is that we would add back the fourteen thousand to complete the trail. Are there any other changes anybody wants to throw on the table at this point?
There, there, there are hard cuts when you look at a budget of that magnitude. Because we're doing nickel and dime things, trying to save a million bucks. And it's hurting a lot of different things that we're trying to do. But, I think staff's done an excellent job bringing back this report. I commend them for it. A lot of time and effort went into that. So, appreciate your work.
And not to say that, I mean, changes can still be made. This is just, we have budget debate coming up, so.
Good. Great. Any other questions? Any comments? So, we'll move along. So, we have Policy eighty-nine fees, inclusion of parking permits. Who's taking that?
I'd be happy to take that.
Thank you.
So, this is just following our past work around parking and putting the parking permit fees in the fees bylaws. So, this is primarily administrative.
Great. And we want to make sure that everybody has a, access to parking and all the parking scenarios are covered. And twenty-five dollars a month, two fifty a year, doesn't seem like a bad deal. So, there is a motion?
You might have to refresh, but it is there.
Okay. So, there is a motion. Somebody want to bring that forward?
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the proposed amendments to Policy eighty-nine, fees to include parking permit fees as outlined in Document eighty-nine, and that the amended policy be effective immediately.
And do we have a seconder? Councilor Freejair, any discussion?
Question?
All those in favor? Great. Thank you. And last, on the docket, is the facade improvement project. Taking that, Jessica?
Do you want me to tee that up? Sure. So, just before Jessica gets into discussing the recommended improvements from staff, after the report was circulated, there was some further commentary from councillors considering some other things that council may wish to change. So, with that, we worked and put in revised motion. If, it's the will of council to look at, examine some other things. Instead of changing the MOU and then changing the MOU again, we would recommend that you send it away back to us to do that once. So, the first recommendation you have in your package, if it's the will of council to look at a few other things, is to send it back to us. If council's happy to let it go, then the alternate motion would be good to go. Jessica can overview what we were asked to do.
Sure. So, the Bridgewater Facade Society appeared as a delegation before you on February twelfth and requested that council consider both an expansion to the current program area and a budget request to provide additional funding for providing more grants to a larger area of potential grantees. So, staff took that away and reviewed the activity to date from the facade society and the program, and also looked at what the facade society was requesting. And so, just to point to the, the appendices in the document, there's three maps. Appendix A has the current facade improvement program area, which aligns with the current architectural control area with the land use bylaw for architectural control in the King Street area. So, it's just downtown King Street from just the other side of Victoria to the other side of Maple Street. The society has requested an expanded program area that goes up Dufferin Street, all along King Street in the existing area, along La Havre Street, encompassing the mall and East Side Plaza, and up Aberdeen, almost to the District of Lunenburg offices. Staff reviewed this with going back to the intent and purpose behind the facade improvement program and the, the way that the agreement and program was crafted when it started, and are recommending a smaller improvement program area. So, scaling the request from the society back to the existing area along King Street and also the area up Dufferin Street, sort of taking into account the, the focus on, on the historic facades and, and keeping it in line with architectural control requirements. And that was sort of part of the premise of why the initial program area was chosen, was to help maintain the historic look and feel of the downtown. And so, staff recommendation is, differs, it varies from what the society requested. And we were recommending that there would be a modest improve, expansion to the program area as described in that Appendix C, and a, rather than a fifty thousand dollar top-up, which was the total value of the program money that council granted to the society two years ago, that perhaps a top-up. to the society two years ago, that perhaps a top-up, so approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars, to bring their, their amount of program funding back up to fifty, not to provide a, a full additional fifty, just based on the uptake. They still have some money in the bank from the original fifty thousand dollars, and there has been, um, quite a few applications, um, some that have been turned down, and some that withdrew from the program, et cetera, so they haven't used all of their current, the funds that were provided the first time around, so we didn't, uh, support, so we're providing, uh, recommending a separate, um, amount. Um, just to talk a little bit more about the, um, I know there's been some, some questioning around what the certain elements are that are included within the facade improvement program, um, and, and just to say that it, you know, the, the opportunity, um, this program was responding to an opportunity to help incent businesses to create a, uh, improved aesthetic of the historic downtown, and to sort of go a little bit hand in hand with the large renovation to the downtown that, that, uh, council, um, and, and the town has put in with the new Bajinowaska Park and the new streetscape. Um, and we want to encourage businesses to locate on King and to stay on King, uh, and to, when they're there, to help improve the, the streetscape. So, um, you know, we think that all the elements that are in the current program are important for that. Um, you know, it's a risk you take to invest in, in downtowns, that sometimes some of those businesses may not, you know, may not continue, or that something happens. So, I know, um, you know, one of the, the buildings that received some facade money burned down, so that investment disappeared. Um, another business is now closing, um, but had, you know, a great facade during the time that it was there, and, uh, and hopefully is enticing the other businesses to come in, in place. It's seen as a, as an improvement on the street, as a desirable place to be, and hopefully that, uh, space will not be vacant for very long, as a result of some of these efforts.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, is someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Um, that Town Council, sorry. Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approved the amended facade improvement program, MOU, specifically the expansion of the facade improvement program area to Pleasant Street and Dufferin Street properties within the restricted commercial zone and the historic downtown commercial zone as presented in Document eighteen dash zero four six.
And is there a second, or? Any further discussion? I don't think that, that we should be including signs.
Well, that's an ex motion, isn't it?
Alternate.
Only, there's only one motion. There's three choices, but in one motion.
Yeah.
Two motions, sorry. I, I, I don't think that it should be.
You're, you're absolutely right.
I think if a business, it's, it's their, it's an entrance to their store, if they haven't got pride enough to, uh, to put up a nice sign, to entice people to come into their store, they certainly don't deserve taxpayer's money. You know, I've owned a store before, I know they're expensive, uh, owned a business, but, you know, it's, it's the cost of doing business, right? So, I, so I think, I think the program myself, I think, I think it needs a little bit of rethink. I'm not exactly sure. I certainly know why it was intended, uh, but in my opinion, I just don't think that we're achieving what I thought was going to be achieved personally. Um, I've looked at some of the buildings, and you kind of think, well, I, I don't know, if I, I may have made a different decision, I guess, I, I don't know. So, I, I think personally that it needs a slight little rethink, and before, I'm willing to put taxpayer money into the programs. I won't be voting as stated. Counselor McDonald?
I think it makes sense after the first year, when we're expanding and looking at it, for staff to, to have a, a bit of time to look at it, and, um, bring back a report to council, and allow us some conversation, debate, and, and discussion around how it could be or should be tweaked before we invest more and expand in. I, I, I just think that that makes sense, I think it's kind of a due diligence kind of thing. So, I won't be supporting the motion as, as made.
Counselor, again, sorry.
I, I misunderstood, obviously, because I was under the impression we're prepared to expand the area. But I also thought we're going to go back and look at what we are actually using this money for. I can't imagine us funding signage, and, uh, for that reason, I will not be supporting this motion.
And just a comment about, in my opinion, uh, the, the, the expansion of the area up Dufferin Street. I know certainly there's a lot of construction on Dufferin Street, there's a lot of people that take pride in the buildings, they're buying buildings, and they're, and they're putting good money in these buildings. La Havre, uh, the chiropractic, she's put money in, the barber shop across the street, uh, there's a dental surgeon, uh, there's a, uh, a chiropractor, there's numerous examples of people that have put money, and, and I don't think it really needs taxpayer money. I think, I think, I think the fact that, uh, the critical mass, I think when people see the buildings, and, and what type of style they are, and, and what good shape they're in, that someone who buys a building will be more inclined to invest in that building. Does that make any sense? So, I think the area, I, I certainly think that King Street could use some help, um, but I don't think Dufferin really does it this, in my opinion, at this point. I think, I think Dufferin's a pretty healthy street, and I think that there's investment on that street, and I don't think it needs taxpayers' money, so. Counselor Fuher?
Just for clarity purposes, so, the MOU does not specifically state about signage in the MOU?
I'm double checking, okay. No, um, thank you for your question, but no, it does not specifically set that within the MOU. It talks about, uh, the town shall set program parameters, such as amount, um, amount that may be applied for, and the types of eligible upgrades to the facades, so that's Section three point five of the existing MOU, so that does provide, uh, counsel, uh, should you wish to provide further direction around the types of eligible upgrades, uh, to the facade.
So, I guess, in this motion, it, it does say the amended facade improved. That is already amended, is that correct?
Yes, this was amended with some, um, I'm sorry, it's not a track change version, so I can't pick, it was just minor, uh, housekeeping amendments around the area, the, for the proposed expanded area, but, um, that particular, uh, Section three point five was not changed from the, uh, original MOU, so that would be in the current, uh, memorandum. That, uh, does say the town could make changes to the parameters of the project, um, and the town would agree, so that, the second part of that is the town agrees to provide the society with reasonable notice in order to implement the changes. So, you don't have to amend the MOU for the town to provide some amendments to the program eligibility requirements. Does that make sense?
Okay. Well, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Questions? All those in favor? And opposed? So, there is the opportunity to put another motion on the floor, if, if there's interest from council.
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater refer the proposed amended Bridgewater Facade Improvement Program, MOU, to staff for revisions based on council's input, including exclusion of funding for business signs, inclusion of confirmation of accounts being in good standing with the town.
And whatever else.
Others?
I'll stick in that.
And stuff. Don't put in stuff.
You got a second, or? Any other further discussion?
Question on that.
Yeah, sorry.
I know it's not on either one of them, but I think there was an ask there to top up the twenty-seven thousand to the original fifty thousand.
Yes.
Will that come as a separate motion?
No, that was a, the next motion. That is, that is as an ex motion, and it's referring to budget, yes, so.
Great, thanks.
Question?
Question?
All those in favor, sorry.
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater refer the grant request for the Facade Society to the two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget deliberations.
Do we have a second, or? Second, Counselor Verber. Any other discussion?
Question?
All those in favor? Great, thank you. And we have a new business, and I believe our CAO will take care of this.
I'll tee this up for council here. There's a motion that, um, I'm hoping somebody from council will, will read, but, uh, so, um, uh, this item is respect, is with respect to the, um, involvement with the Town of Bridgewater and the South Shore Regional Enterprise Network. The REN was formed in two thousand and fourteen to represent the nine municipal units comprising the South Shore, which include the Municipality District Chester, Municipality District Lunenburg, Town of Mahomag, Town of Lunenburg, Town of Lockport, Town of Shelburne, Region of Queens, the District of Shelburne. The purpose of the REN was to develop and implement strategies and/or services for regional economic development, tourism, and business attraction and retention while monitoring the business climate. It was based on the provincial model, model for regional economic development. Under the REN model, the province provides fifty percent funding with the remainder from the participating units. Operations and recommendations are provided by the Liaison and Oversight Committee, Board of Directors, and two staff members. So, the current situation is the principles behind a regional model are sound. The geographic of, area of the REN has not worked well, resulting in a sometimes misaligned approach. Other RENS in other regions of Nova Scotia have already refined their model to, to fit their regional needs. For example, Cumberland County and the Town of Amherst originally proposed to join with Colchester County have opted to form their own REN, similar to Colchester, and the Town of Truro have partnered together. Some of the municipal units in the South Shore Regional Econ, uh, Enterprise Network have shown interest in dissolving the current REN in favor of an adjusted model that sharpens focus to a realigned economic region. With agreement, next steps would be, uh, with agreement among all units, municipal partners from Lunenburg County will move forwards towards dissolving the current REN, and the geographic area will be more focused. We will approach the province to see if they will work with municipal units to adjust the current model, so it'll align more closely with the direction and needs of our respective collective economic development vision. We would hope that the, to be able to maintain the existing representatives on the South Shore Regional Enterprise Network Board, and have them assist us with a refined scope of work and narrowed focus for regional economic developments. Partners are committed to a regional economic development model, as success in economic development is a priority involved. So, we would review the current strategy to ensure it captures the essence of each municipal partner's expectations or requirement for economic development in our region. So, that being said, there'll be several, um, uh, municipal units over the next week or two that will be having the similar motion put forward to their councils. Um, and with that, I'll turn it to somebody in council to read the motion.
So, there is a motion in our package, of Counselor Verber?
Yeah. That pursuant to Section fourteen of the intermunicipal agreement established in the South Shore Regional Enterprise Network, dated January the twelfth, two seven, two thousand seventeen, Bridgewater Town Council hereby gives notice, gives one year's notice of its intention to withdraw as a partner in the South Shore Regional Enterprise Network, and authorize the mayor to send a letter to the Chair of the Board of Directors and the Chair of Liaison and Oversight Committee advising of saying.
And do we have a second, or? Counselor McDonald? Any further discussion?
Yeah, the only discussion, um, I was, I was around the table, and the REN was formed, and the general feeling amongst the, the politicians on the South Shore when this was set up originally, is that the, the area was much too big, too diversified, much too big, and so, this, this is the way that we have to go.
Counselor Verber?
And, and I think we've reached out to the province, and I think they're quite willing to work with us, redefine the boundaries, or work with everybody in the REN to make sure everybody has a place to go when it's all done.
Any further discussion?
Question?
Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. So, as stated earlier, we do have an in-camera meeting, uh, following this meeting, as allowed under the MGA Section twenty-two-two E, contract negotiations. Motion to adjourn?
Oh, question, uh, point of order.
Yep.
There is a motion that we didn't cover, and that was Motion five dot zero to approve the minutes of the two months prior. Uh, it was done on a consensus, but I think there's a motion that should be read, their official document of what business transpired here, and should be a motion.
Unanimous consent is permitted.
Yeah, so we all agree with that?
If I can bring it up, I'll read the motion.
Yeah.
I'm down at the other end of the page, we got. This computer works.
Yeah, it was approved, sorry.
No, we didn't vote on, we didn't make a motion on to it.
Yeah.
Not to my knowledge.
There was not a motion, however, it was approved by unanimous consent. Chair asked for any, any concerns, and there were none, not forward.
I still think there should be a motion on a point of order. It's on our document.
Sure, go ahead, Counselor Verber.
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve and confirm the minutes of the February twenty-sixth and March twelfth regular council meeting as circulated.
Is there a second, or? Any, any questions?
Question, call.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. And do we have a niggardium?
Still moved.
Thank you. Great.